Mr. Mayor at seven o'clock.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Madam Clerk. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regular meeting of the City Council on this Tuesday night, January eighteenth. I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask that everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Gothols?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Papin? Mayor Bonilla?
I'm here. Thank you very much.
And I will note in the minutes when Diane joins the meeting.
Thank you very much. Due to the health orders in place currently, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If you're calling via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And with that said, we shall now move on to ceremonial items, of which we have two tonight. And the first one is a proclamation proclaiming January twenty twenty-two as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I will read this now. Whereas the United States Senate designated January eleventh as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day in two thousand and seven, and beginning in two thousand and ten by presidential proclamation, each January has been designated National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And whereas, human trafficking involves commercial sexual exploitation and labor exploitation. Sex trafficking is defined as a commercial sex act that is induced by force, fraud, or coercion. But if the person has not attained the age of eighteen years old, force, fraud, or coercion is not required. Labor trafficking is defined as the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of subjection to involuntary servitude, peonage, or debt bondage, or slavery. And whereas, human trafficking is a human rights violation and a violation of both federal and California law. It also promotes the breakdown of families and communities. It fuels organized crime, deprives countries of human capital, undermines public health, and imposes large economic costs. And whereas, the crime of human trafficking is present in every country and in every U.S. state. And whereas, the FBI has identified California and the San Francisco Bay Area as an area of high prevalence for human trafficking. Although human trafficking is illegal, victims often do not recognize their victimization, do not know that help is available, or where to seek assistance. And whereas, forced labor, involuntary domestic servitude, and commercial sexual exploitation of adults and youths have been found to exist within local communities. And whereas, public awareness about human trafficking still needs to reach broader communities and communicate more information about the nuances of this crime. And whereas, the San Mateo Police Department has supported the efforts of the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association Human Trafficking Program and has partnered with other governmental and non-governmental organizations to forward the enforcement and prosecution to end sexual exploitation. Now therefore, I, Rick Bonilla, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-two as Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the City of San Mateo, and I encourage all employers, officers, and residents to support the national and local fight against human trafficking. Signed, Rick Bonilla, Mayor of the City of San Mateo. So tonight, I think we have Dr. Sue Stevens, who will be receiving the proclamation and is going to speak a little bit about this important issue. Welcome, Doc.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Bonilla, Deputy Mayor Papin, and council members. Thank you for your time and for placing this important proclamation on the agenda to bring this issue, the crime of human trafficking, to the attention of those participating in this meeting tonight. I'm Sue Stevens. I live in San Mateo County. I'm a physician, and I'm volunteering with the Human Trafficking Program to raise awareness among care providers in our county. I'm pleased to be here to accept this proclamation. Unfortunately, many people still think human trafficking is a crime that happens in other countries, but they couldn't be more wrong. It occurs throughout the U.S. and in San Mateo County. It happens to women and girls, men and boys, foreign nationals, and U.S. citizens. In fact, in two thousand and twenty-one, the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program conducted a voluntary assessment of local agencies and organizations and, quote, during two thousand and twenty, from the twenty responses received, a range of two hundred and eighty-two to three hundred and six human trafficking victims were identified who had some nexus with San Mateo County, an average of over twenty-three victims per month. These responses include minors and adults, labor and sex trafficking victims. We have no way of knowing how many more victims are out there, but remain in the shadows. The San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program was created in two thousand and fifteen. It is a San Mateo County Sheriff's Program in cooperation with the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff Association. It is currently staffed by our fearless leader Pamela Estes, the Human Trafficking Program Coordinator. The San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program works to enhance the response to human trafficking countywide in several different ways. One, seeking to encourage collaborative partnerships among county agencies and non-governmental organizations. Two, working to enhance the delivery of services to victims. Three, training law enforcement. Four, providing training and education. And finally, raising community awareness about the crime of human trafficking through a variety of events throughout the year. The Human Trafficking Program hosts a monthly meeting called the Human Tracking Initiative. I attend these meetings. It is open to members of governmental, non-governmental, faith, and community-based organizations, and members of the public who have a role or interest in the response to human trafficking within San Mateo County. The HTI meetings focus on the response to human trafficking, not only within the county, but also to deliver relevant information on all aspects of human trafficking. To contact Human Trafficking Program with any questions or request training in your agency or organization, you can get more involved by merely emailing one word, stophumantrafficking@smcssanmateocounty.gov.org, or visit the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program website, again, one word, stophumantraffickingSMC.org. Thank you very much for inviting me here tonight and for allowing me to pass this information on to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Okay, we are now going to move on to our second ceremonial item tonight, which will be a presentation. Thank you, Dr. Stevens.
Should I go? Should I leave or something?
Yeah, well, I think you don't have to.
But I can?
I'm just letting you know that we're moving on to the next item. Thank you very much.
All right, maybe see you next January. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, bye-bye. Next item is a ceremonial item recognizing Officer Paula Gendotti of the San Mateo Police Department. It's a commendatory resolution, which I'm going to read right now. Resolution number C two, two thousand and twenty-two, commending Investigations Administrative Assistant Paula Gendotti for her service with the San Mateo Police Department, June nineteen eighty through December twenty twenty-one, resolved by the City Council of the City of San Mateo, California, that, whereas Investigations Administrative Assistant Paula Gendotti has served the people of San Mateo with distinction and professionalism as a member of the San Mateo Police Department. And whereas, Paula's retirement marks over forty-one years of merit service and approximately four years of per diem service to the City of San Mateo. And whereas, Paula's knowledge and skills have been recognized throughout the ranks, including by the police chief and the district attorney's office, as being the apex of police investigative documentation. And whereas, Paula's colleagues found her passion and memory skills to be of great value and assistance in efforts to solve cases and bring closure to victims' families. And whereas, Paula's position as the administrative assistant assigned to investigations worked closely with the Department of Justice, as well as the District Attorney's Office, to understand new laws related to sex offenders, to ensure requirements were met. And whereas, throughout her entire career, Paula was always willing to take the extra step to help her coworkers and share her training, knowledge, and experience with all of her colleagues in the San Mateo Police Department. And whereas, the dedication Paula has shown to the City of San Mateo and the Police Department deserves the highest accolades and recognition. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of San Mateo does hereby confer upon Paula Gendotti its highest recommendation for the exemplary manner in which she has performed her duties as a member of the San Mateo Police Department, with special thanks for her patience and kindness to members of the public sector, adopted this eighteenth day of January twenty twenty-two by Rick Bonilla, Mayor of the City of San Mateo and the City Council. Thank you very much. I think right now somebody is going to be speaking on, maybe Paula or somebody else. Do we have a speaker man, of course?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I believe Paula's on the call and wanted to say a few words.
Thank you. Paula, could you please join us? You have to unmute.
Mute? Okay. I am forever grateful for all the opportunities the city has afforded me. Thank you all for being part of my life.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, could I have a quick sec to chime in regarding Paula?
You sure can. Thank you.
I just wanted to, again, reiterate what the accommodation said and recognize Paula as a fixture here at the Police Department. Forty years, forty-one years is quite a feat. I had the pleasure of seeing Paula every morning when I came into work, and she was always very dedicated and committed to her work in the Investigations Bureau. But more than that, there's no one who was more thoughtful or is more thoughtful in the Police Department. She always put others first, would remember individuals with little gifts, and really made this place a nice place to come to, to work even during very difficult times and difficult investigations. So I just wanted to pass along my personal thanks, and on behalf of the department, our gratitude to Paula for everything she's done for such a long time. She'll always be a member of the Police Department here, and we're very grateful.
Thank you very much, Chief Barberini. Okay, seeing that, we will now move on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number four, Remote Teleconference City Council and Commission Meetings Reauthorization. Item number five, Senior Citizens Commission and General Plan Subcommittee Appointment Subcommittee Recommendations. Item number six, Councilmember and Clerk Travel Authorization. That's been amended to just be the clerk. Item number seven, California Department of Justice Tobacco Grant Program Award Grant Acceptance and Backfill Officer Assignment. Item number eight, Contracts with Contingency Component and Update. Item number nine, Renewable Diesel Fuel Purchase Amendment. Item number ten, Fair Integration Letter of Support. And item number eleven, two thousand and twenty-two Annual Investment Policy Approval.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, let me... Oh, was there a comment there? No. Okay, seeing none, let me ask if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item. Now would be the time to raise your hand, and this is for consent calendar items only.
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Thank you very much. That said, the mayor would be looking for a motion to approve. Motion to approve the consent calendar. And a second. Very good. Madam Clerk, could we please have the roll?
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
That's good. Thank you very much. So now is the time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item which is not appearing on tonight's agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents councilmen taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for following. Public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda if needed. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have one hand raised. Noelia Corzo?
Sure, thank you. Do you need to unmute, Noelia?
Thank you. Give me one second. I'm just pulling up what I'll be reading. Here we go. Good evening, Mayor Bonilla and members of council. My name is Noelia Corzo, and I'm here to read a statement from a resident named Mina who has lived in San Mateo for thirty-five years. Her statement has been translated from Spanish. "Thank you for the opportunity to tell my story this evening. From two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty, I lived in an apartment on North Amphite in San Mateo. In late two thousand and nineteen, I contacted my landlord about some problems at my apartment. There were holes in the walls, only one of the stove burners was working, and there were lots of cockroaches. She came to inspect the apartment several months later. Then in July two thousand and twenty, she sent me a letter saying I had to move out so that the repairs could be done. In August, my family moved to another apartment in San Mateo. The new apartment was six hundred dollars more than the old one. This whole experience caused me a lot of stress. It happened in the early days of the pandemic, and I was very nervous about searching for an apartment at a time when everyone was very anxious about getting the disease. I recently found out something, and I understand that all this should not have happened at all. What I found out is that there was a state law passed in two thousand and nineteen. This said that landlords could not even attend for repairs unless they took more than thirty days and needed a permit. I don't think the landlord did repairs that were nearly that big. Also, the state law says I should have been paid a month's rent to help me move. I wasn't paid anything. This should not have happened to my family. I hope you will make sure that other landlords do not take advantage of their tenants and make them go through the same thing." Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, unfortunately, we're not allowed to comment on this at this time. But thank you very much for reading the statement from the renter. We appreciate that. Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is John H. Love.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, Deputy Mayor Papin, and members of the City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is John Love. I have been a resident of San Mateo since nineteen ninety-nine and am a member of the Social Action Ministry at St. Matthew's Catholic Church. I've come before you this evening because I'm aware that the council is preparing to create its work plan for the coming year, and I want to encourage you to prioritize the prevention of renter evictions and to help keep people in their homes. Research in recent years has revealed the extent to which evictions damage families. It is often a highly traumatic event that undermines a family's prospects for years to come. It can be especially harmful to young people and has been tied to numerous negative impacts such as lowered school performance, increased dropout rates, and higher incidences of adolescent violence. Many of those who are most vulnerable to eviction are essential workers, such as grocery clerks, restaurant workers, and healthcare workers whose contributions to our society have been celebrated enthusiastically over the past couple of years. If we truly appreciate these essential workers and the central role they play in the everyday function of our community, how can we turn our backs on their needs? While celebrating the Martin Luther King Day holiday yesterday, I was reminded of how much housing evictions disproportionately affect people of color. It is my sincere hope that any new proposed housing rules include some consideration of the disproportionate and discriminatory impact these policies might have on those who can least afford it. Stable housing is a basic need for the well-being of all San Mateo families. We know how foundational it is to our neighborhood and the greater community at large. So as you set your priorities for the coming year, I urge you to put eviction prevention at the top of your list. Please help to keep families in their homes. Thank you for your time and for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no other hands raised.
Okay, seeing no other speakers, then we'll close the public comment period and move on to the next order of business tonight, which is going to be item twelve, Universal Healthcare Resolution and Support.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Bonilla, members of the City Council. The item before you is Resolution in Support of Universal Healthcare. So by way of background, the concept of adopting a resolution of support for single-payer healthcare was brought up initially at the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting, and there was majority council support to bring that back for discussion. We council did have that discussion on January the third, so just two weeks ago. The discussion really focused on providing support for three concepts, and those concepts are universal healthcare coverage, universal healthcare access, and the elimination of disparities in coverage and health outcomes. So in terms of direction for tonight, I did provide a draft resolution that was prepared based on that January third discussion. It was based initially on the South San Francisco resolution. However, it really focused on the concepts from the previous slide of universal coverage, universal access, and the elimination of disparities versus a specific mechanism to get there. And so the direction I'm requesting tonight is, does council want to adopt the resolution as it has been drafted, or does it want to amend the resolution prior to adopting? That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Opening up to council members for questions, discussion, whatever. Any council members wanting to start? Okay, then seeing none, I guess we'll go straight to the public comment.
Rick, I'll just say I appreciate the value statement, and I think it accurately states what we said in our meeting. That's all.
Perfect. Thank you. And I have to say I concur with that thinking. If there's no further question or comment, we'll go to a public comment.
We have one hand raised. Amanda Minch?
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Bonilla. Just wanted to thank everyone for bringing this important issue forward and taking a stand on what we believe the citizens of San Mateo would deserve and appreciate the time put into amending this amendment if it's agreeable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay.
I have no other hands raised.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Coming back to the council then, I guess unless we have additional comments, we will ask for a motion to approve.
I move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, could we please have the roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Gothols?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Deputy Mayor Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four one.
Thank you very much. And move on to the next item of business tonight, which will be still under old business, item thirteen. We're going to have a presentation on the mid-year budget update. I think we'll have Finance Director Richard Lang with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, members of the council. Rich Lee, Finance Director.
Both are with us.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
The item on the agenda this evening for you is an update on the mid-year for the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Let me just give you a moment. I can share my screen. Okay, let me close that. So let's start off with the general fund. So the general fund is the city's primary operating fund. We had projected one hundred and forty-four and a half million in total revenues as a part of the amended budget based on November year-to-date. We believe that by the end of this fiscal year, we will have accounted for one hundred fifty-five point two million, so a difference of over ten million dollars. Total expenditures, we believe, will be very close to budget. There's really two contributors to the favorable variance. First is the Parks and Recreation Department. We had anticipated that there would be a number of sessions and classes that we'd be able to offer and the anticipation of, I guess, being better off than where we currently are with the various variants and recovery from that. So we have some savings there because of those classes were not be able to be held. The second is a staff vacancy that we had planned, a million and a half dollars, that we monitor on a monthly basis to provide some relief to the general fund. But the focus of the majority of this presentation is the favorable variance for the total revenues because that's where the lion's share of the budget variance is. There's really two contributors to the favorable general fund revenue budget variance. The first is property tax. There's multiple drivers behind this. The first is a very common VLF that we presented to the council a number of times. We had anticipated a one-hundred-million-dollar shortfall, very similar to what occurred in the prior fiscal year where we had a ninety-six-point-two-million-dollar shortfall countywide. However, that trend is not linear. And as you may recall, the primary driver behind that shortfall is the unique mix of basic aid school districts and non-basic aid school districts in the county. The short story is that there are not enough non-basic aid school districts in San Mateo County, and that is the primary source for funding the VLF that is owed to the cities and to the county. Because of that, the dearth of non-basic aid school districts, that's why we're in this predicament, is what I would consider a structural flaw in the state's revenue taxation code. Now, as I said, that trend is not linear, but we had anticipated a one-hundred-million-dollar countywide shortfall. Based on current projections from the county, they believe that the countywide shortfall will be closer to fifty-six and a half million dollars. So that's a favorable budget variance for VLF for the current fiscal year. Also a bit of good news, the governor's proposed budget for twenty-two, twenty-three does include making San Mateo County whole for the VLF shortfall that occurred in the prior fiscal year, again, ninety-six-point-two million dollars. The city's share of that is five-point-seven million dollars, so that will be, you know, unless there are changes in the budget upon adoption, that will be coming to the city next fiscal year. Excess ERAF, again, this is money that goes back to nineteen ninety-four that was originally taken away from cities in order to fulfill the state's obligation to fund public school districts. And it's a little bit of a misnomer. It's really not excess ERAF. It's really property tax that's being returned to us that was originally taken away. And San Mateo County is one of five counties in the entire state of California that actually generates excess ERAF. And there was a disagreement, if the council recalls, between the State Controller's Office and the five counties that actually generate excess ERAF, and how they were calculating ERAF. As a part of our budget assumptions, the anticipation was that it would be an unfavorable outcome on resolution between the state and the five counties. And the long and short of it is that the outcome was not favorable, but that the amount that was in dispute, the county is being able to, all the counties are able to keep that. So the ERAF that was being withheld, we are going to receive for the year. So moving forward, ERAF will likely be a little bit less than previous years, but for the current fiscal year, we are going to have a one-time bump. The last bit of property tax that had an impact on the budget variance is the what council likes to call the boomerang property tax. It comes from the former redevelopment agency. As a taxing entity, the city receives a share of what's known as the residual. So there's the gross property tax increment from the redevelopment agency, the former redevelopment agency, less any pass-through agreements with taxing entities, less any recognized obligations on behalf of the former redevelopment agency, which are primarily debt service obligations. The remainder is what's called the residual. And that's what was in dispute with a case law that's a few years old, and it impacts how the residual, excuse me, the residual is allocated amongst the taxing entities. The long and short of it is that the city's share of that residual was decreased for the current fiscal year and retroactively as well. What it means is, you know, that property tax doesn't magically disappear. It goes to other taxing entities. In this case, it was the county. So moving forward, the boomerang property tax, our assumption is that we will continue to have a smaller share of the residual. The other primary driver behind the favorable revenue budget variance is real property transfer tax. This graph shows the history of some specific metrics that kind of drive what's happening with the real estate market. The blue bars reflect the median sales price for a single-family residential home in the city of San Mateo, going back to Q1 of 2016 all the way through Q3 of 2021. If we were to look at this with no paying no attention to what's happening with the health and safety code, you would think that nothing happened. In fact, we've gone through a pandemic starting in Q2 of 2020, and the median sales price actually went up. The yellow line is corresponding to the left axis, and that is the number of houses that are in, excuse me, inventory for that quarter. Again, fairly low inventory, and that's been steady for the past five years. The green line is the number of homes that have been sold on a quarter-over-quarter basis. And again, Q3 of 2021, a high for the past five years. And then finally, the average day is on market. So from the time that the house is listed until the time that it sells has been averaging less than two weeks over the past five years. So all of these metrics have pointed toward the city's real property transfer tax continuing to come in strong. This chart shows the past 20 years of real property transfer tax history for the city. And we've shown this chart to the council before, and it does, you know, outline a great deal of volatility. And this is one of the most difficult revenue sources to project. However, if you look at this from a periodicity perspective, so the dot-com boom from 2002 to 2006, we averaged 7.3 million in real property transfer tax. Then the Great Recession came from 2007 to 2012, and the average went down significantly to 4.6 million. From 2013 to 2019, we had that period of significant growth and steady growth at that, where we averaged over $11 million in real property transfer tax. And we've begun what I would call, you know, the new period of COVID-19, the real estate market pivoting and adapting to the current conditions. We're still averaging well above $10 million. What this data supports is resetting the baseline for our assumption for real property transfer tax. Let me go to the next slide to kind of outline that that change in the baseline. So for the current fiscal year at a micro level, we had assumed $8.5 million in real property transfer tax, and that's our long-term assumption, or was. For we believe that based on November year-to-date receipts, we should end the year around $13 million. So compared to the amended budget, that's a $4.5 million budget variance. It also, so if I go back to the last slide, it supports adjusting that baseline long-term assumption for real property transfer tax from eight and a half to something closer to $11.1 million, which is the average of the current period and the prior period of recovery and growth. So going back to the recap of the general fund results, we anticipate that based on our projected revenues, less our total expenditures, we should end the year with about $8.6 million in the black. Now, one thing to keep in mind is that the adopted budget did assume $9.6 million from the American Recovery Act. And if you were to subtract that from the amended budget and the estimated revenues, that would change our projected net to a little bit of a dip of $1 million. However, that those funds, obviously Congress passed, and the president signed the act into place. So we are going to be receiving $9.6 million in May of 2022. I'm going to pause right there on the general fund and see if there are any questions in the council. If not, I'll move on to the construction services fund. Okay, I'm not hearing any questions, so I'm going to move on. There's two other major funds in the city's general ledger. The first is the construction services fund, which accounts for all of the building permit activity. And there's a little bit of a variance there with the revenues, but it does support the ongoing demand for development-related services. We do have a fairly significant favorable budget variance in total expenditures. That's really pointing toward professional services. We had assumed, I'm thinking of one line, I'm in particular, $1.4 million in the adopted budget for professional services. And that November year-to-date, we've only spent $130,000. And in speaking with our community development director about this, there are some complications and complexities with compliance with AB5 that they're consulting and working with the city attorney's office on. And we believe that there will be a little bit of ramp-up as we get later on in the fiscal year. But that's the primary driver for why this fund, and it does have a little bit of significant variance on expenditures. The sewer fund, as council may recall, we include that in the secure property tax rule for the city. So it's collected as residents pay their property tax bill. And we are a teeter city, so that means that regardless if residents pay the property tax or not, we will receive 100% of the secure property tax rule. So that's secure property tax and the sewer service fee. Because of that, we were not anticipating any unfavorable variance in total revenues for the sewer fund. Total expenses, we are anticipating a little bit of variance there, and that's largely due to staff vacancy savings. So the sewer fund, we anticipate the net to be about $4 million. And again, that's needed in order to really support strong metrics for one, cash on hand. And that's something that our credit rating agencies look at to to support our ongoing high credit rating, double A rated for our enterprise, as well as the debt coverage ratio. So what that means is you take your operating revenues, less your operating expenditures, that's your 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 net revenues, and you take that amount and you divide it by your your debt service obligations for that year. That ratio has to be 120% at a minimum to comply with our debt obligation requirements. The last, and as the council knows, on when we provide an update on the mid-year budget, we always look at what's happening with Calpers and the public pensions. What's really just come to a close is the asset liability management cycle. It began back in July of 2020. And the bottom line of what they look at is what level of risk is the Calpers Board willing to take on its investments? And they looked at a number of scenarios, you know, changes to what's known as the asset allocation. So for what percentage do they want for the various asset types, from private debt, private equity, to global equity? And and they actually introduced leverage, so borrowing money to magnify the returns or losses to to back into a discount rate. So what the Calpers Board arrived at was candidate portfolio B2, so a 6.8% discount rate, which means that's their long-term assumption for what they're going to earn and the return on investment. And then with 5% leverage, so leveraging 5% of the portfolio to borrow funds at a rate of an assumed rate of 1.5% in interest expense to magnify returns. Here's what that means for the average Calpers member agency. So going, you know, in each row, those are the various pension plans, from miscellaneous plans, which are all non-safety classifications, to safety. So those are police officers and firefighters. On the far right, that's the the average percentage increase in the employer contribution because of the change in asset allocation, the demographic assumptions, and the change in inflation, the assumption for inflation. They actually just rolled out the what's known as the pension outlook tool and the ability to see what will the changes to the asset liability management cycle have on your specific plans? And I ran that through their their tool, and I can present that include that in presentation to the council at the April update, which will provide another update on the current fiscal year, as well as a preview of the general fund's budget for the next fiscal year. So for this evening, the recommendation is that the council adopt a resolution to appropriate 110,000 of additional projected real property transfer tax to the general fund, specifically to the non-departmental operating budget to correct an error in the adopted 21, 22 budget, and transfer $38,265 in budget from the city clerk's operating budget to the comprehensive liability fund to address legal costs related to the transition to district district elections, excuse me. And with that, I'm going to stop my presentation and welcome any questions in the council.
Thank you very much, Director Lee. Does the council have any questions?
Question. Rich, if the if there's a change to that discount rate, would you anticipate that there could be a change to it? First of all, thank you for the presentation. You did a great job. But if you had a crystal ball, how do you feel about how reliable that number is, the 6.8%?
Great question, and there's really the asset liability asset liability management cycle occurs once every four years. And that's when they, that's their recurring schedule for looking at the discount rate. However, what occurred June 30th of 2021 is that Calpers actually had a 21.3% return, which on the face of it is great. But if you think about interest as a measurement of the level of risk that they are taking, the disparity between their actual return on investment versus their discount rate at the time of 7%, Calpers was taking on too much risk. So they had a they have a policy in place. It's the risk mitigation policy. And it says if their actual returns exceed their discount rate by at least 4%, then it triggers an automatic reduction in the discount rate. And that's exactly what happened in the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2021. So it went from 7% down to 6.8%. And as a part, I guess, part and parcel to that evaluation, they also were conducting the ALM cycle, and they affirmed the 6.8%. But they did that through increasing the allocation in private debt, private equity, and the introduced leverage, just to backfill into that 6.8% discount rate. So in other words, this is something that I brought to the council basically a year ago. And Councilmember Pappen, you picked up on this right away. They're taking on more risk just so that the member agencies do not have any immediate reaction or impact from the the change, a change in the discount rate. So to to provide a second answer to your question, the only chance of there being another reduction in the discount rate is if they were to exceed the discount rate again by at least 4%.
So what does that do to us?
So I was just going over with this, the projected impact to the city. When you factor in a 21.3% return being amortized over, again, being amortized over 20 years, as well as the discount rate being reduced to 6.8%. It does at present, and again, I want to emphasize, this is a snapshot in time, but it does within year five from now reduce the pension contributions by about $5 million. But if Calpers were not were not did not meet the targeted return of 6.8, and as of right now, they're at about 5.3% for their current fiscal year, then they'd have to amortize a loss. So it's it's great news from, I guess, from a pension liability and pension contribution perspective. But as long as they if they continue to underperform, we're going to amortize those losses against this, you know, this gain that we got in one fiscal year that we're amortizing as well.
Any other council members with questions?
I have a question. Rich, you you did a great job comparing what our what our budget outlook would have looked like without the the American Rescue federal bailout that we got. And so I just wanted to ask you to bring that slide back up and and maybe give a little bit more time so that the public can digest, you know, what I think was like really good fiscal planning, that if we had, you know, if we hadn't budgeted for that the that funding, we would have only been in the red by $1 million. So I I wanted to make sure that that got a little bit of time. And if you had any additional comments to make to to to, you know, help help us see this clearer, that would be great.
Yes, I'll have, you know, my comments, and then I'll ask, you know, if the city manager has any comments as well. It really does speak to the city's efforts to control our operating costs. In October, actually going back to May of 2020, the council approved the fiscal sustainability plan. And that's largely was supported by the city negotiating concessions from the employees to provide the general fund with relief. We anticipated, and it did come to fruition, loss of tax revenue, in particular, transit occupancy tax or TOT. And even though that was not, it's not a major tax revenue, you know, in complete absence of that, which basically happened last year, it's a it's a significant hit to the general fund. So that adopted budget of 146 million, that reflects the fiscal sustainability plan being incorporated into the budget. Also, you know, controlling the operating costs to the degree possible. That I really, you know, tip my hat to the city manager on being able to get the support from the bargain units, getting support from the operating departments to take a hard look at our operating costs to find ways that we could provide the general fund with relief.
Thank you so much.
Any other council members seeking to ask questions or or clarifications? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to the public comment. Madam Clerk?
I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay. We'll close the public comment period, then we'll come back to council for final comments. I think, does this take approval, or is this just an update? I believe this is just an update.
Actually, there's a, if I may, there's a resolution that I asked that the council consider. And let me get that up first, so you can see.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
Okay, moved and approved. Madam Clerk, could we call the roll, please?
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. That completes that item, and now moving on to the final item on tonight's agenda, or at least the last action item here, item 14, Police Department Strategic Initiatives and Objectives. This is an update from Chief of Police Ed Barber. Police Department Strategic Initiatives and Objectives. This is an update from Chief of Police Ned Barber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you tonight. My purpose here is to provide an update on the, the police objectives within the council's strategic plan from the previous year. Tonight, I'd like to accomplish a few things. First, I'd like to review the Police Department initiative within that plan. I'd like to provide an update of the status of the objectives that were identified within the plan. I'd like to introduce you to our new mental health clinician, who is working within the Police Department now. And finally, I'd like to review the Police Transparency Page, just located on the city webpage, and create some familiarity with that resource. I'll start with the initial objective identified, and that is to enhance police accountability, transparency, and expand on coordination with mental health and social services. A big piece of this objective was somehow embedding or incorporating mental health resources within the operational environment of the Police Department. We took, we met with the county and discussed options and looked at different options that currently exist, including the Coots Model in Oregon, and some other models throughout the state and throughout the country. What we arrived at was a collaborative partnership between the county and the city that would embed a county representative, mental health representative, primarily from B H R S, from Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, in the Police Department that would basically serve as a day-to-day, real-time resource for officers in the field. This program expanded to include three other cities as conversations grew into a pilot program that is currently functional. And then we also run in a nonprofit partner with Star Vista in order to adequately staff the project. This involves some heavy lifting, and I know I've been through the council, been in front of the council before with this program, so I don't want to be repetitive. But the staff did a fabulous job of the coordination amongst, across the agencies and adoption of M O Us, a policy document. There was a significant amount of training, not only for our clinicians, but for our officers and dispatchers. And we've partnered with the Gardner Center at Stanford University to create a process for which we can assess the program on an ongoing basis to see what works, what doesn't, and where we can improve. And this is a pilot program. We anticipate that it will evolve and grow. I mean, we're eager to see what that looks like, and we believe that the Gardner Center is a, is a great partner in helping us do that. The program went live, so to speak, on November twenty-second, when our clinician was assigned to our Police Department. The first couple of weeks were basically in-house training, where we familiarized the clinician with the department, how we respond for calls for service. This included sit-alongs in the dispatch center, ride-alongs with police officers, and just kind of getting to know the department and, and how our processes worked internally. Since early December, our clinician, Brianna Fair, has been out on her own, working independently. She's in the field on a daily basis. She works forty hours a week. She's, she serves as a resource to our patrol officers in the field, as well as working proactively with our downtown units and homeless outreach team to provide services to, to those that, that may be homeless in the community and, and have not been connected with services yet. You can see there the volume of calls that she's dealt with. These, these statistics or calls are through January tenth, so they're about a week old. And she's, she's responded to a number of different calls in a very short period of time, so we've, we've kept her very, very busy. So far, that's been a, a nice marriage. She's been well received by, by staff and officers here. I mean, I believe that she, I, I'm not, I'm not speaking for her. I'm going to introduce her in a second, but I hope she enjoys it here and likes the environment that she's, she's working in. And I know that she's provided a tremendous, tremendous benefit in a short period of time to not only those in the field who need it, but also to our officers. The interaction I see with her, I go to lineups regularly. She's there. She's communicative. The officers are, are engaging with her, and I think it makes us a better department and it makes our staff better prepared to serve everyone in the community. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm going to introduce Brianna to you, so she can say a few words about herself and her initial impressions with how that program's working. Brianna?
Thank you, Chief. My name is Brianna Fair. I am the mental health clinician in San Mateo County. I have really enjoyed the position. As everyone, I'm sure, is aware, mental health is on the rise. It's a very big increase, especially with COVID, and San Mateo is no different. And I'm really excited to be a part of a program like this that's targeted at addressing the crisis that are happening in the community while they're happening. And it's a privilege, and I do not take it lightly. These are people's lives on the line, and it's a privilege for everyone in the community to be able to have this access to a resource like the B H R S, San Mateo Police Department, and services providing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brianna. I appreciate it. I go back to sharing my screen here, if I, if I may. The, the most beneficial piece, I think, in, in, if Brianna's still alive, I'll let her jump in, is the real-time response. We looked at several different models, and the fact that Brianna is available to our officers right away, and she carries a police radio, she drives a car that allows her to, to be in a position to respond to certain calls, certain types of calls for service. And as we had spoken about before, a lot of, a lot of times when we go to calls for service, we don't initially know that there's a mental health component or a need for that resource. And her autonomy and flexibility in the field has, has made her a true resource to our officers, and I think they appreciate it. Because, again, we're, our officers are not mental health professionals, and they're often looking for help to resolve these types of calls, and she provides just that. So we are excited to see where this program is going to go. Again, we believe it's going to evolve, and it may look a little different than it does today, but I think we're off to, to a good start with, with that. Addressing the, the same initiative, there are some other steps that we've taken as a department over the last year or so. The California Police Commission on Standards and Training provided a de-escalation manual. Our training team got together and reviewed that manual. We liked, we liked it, but however, we didn't think it went far enough. So we incorporate additional principles into our training program regarding de-escalation and had discussions on how we can incorporate them into not only our training, our formal training sessions, but into our culture and best practices. So we, we talk a bit about this on a daily basis, whether it's lineup training, debriefing calls, or when we're preparing for details or calls for service, how de-escalation is incorporated in that. From July through December of last year, cumulatively, our officers attended over twelve hundred hours of training dedicated to de-escalation bias and principal policing. So we are moving in that direction. That's, that's become part of our, part of our standard training practice across the board, and, and we, it's, it's, it's something that has been embraced and accepted by the department. And, and that's, we see that on a daily basis. We did something a little different, and, and I've been here for a couple of years almost now, and I did this at a prior agency, and I, I got a lot of weird looks and raised eyebrows. But our whole department, all of our staff participated in an eight-week mindfulness training course. This, this program separated the department into cohorts of twenty-five people. They met weekly for four hours as a group. We did this remotely due to COVID. However, we think that the benefits were, were, were well worth it. The feedback that we've gotten from most of the staff is that they incorporate a lot of the principles they've, they've learned from this, or they took from this mindfulness training, and implement them in their day-to-day lives. I like to call it more of a resiliency-type training. The premise behind it is if we build stronger, stronger individuals, stronger spouses, stronger partners, stronger friends, stronger parents that have that strong foundation of being mindful, being resilient, that they're going to make better police officers and handle calls for service more effectively in the field on a daily basis. And I think we've seen that. I've noticed that in both individuals as an organization, that it's had an impact on, on what we do and how we do it, and we're looking to, for some options, some sustainable efforts in that area. Also, this wasn't an initial, part of our initial deliverable, but it fell into this objective midway through the year. We had the opportunity, and a member of the community approached me about this, Gloria Brown, who I think is great, and she's been very supportive of us and helping us get better. But we had an opportunity to provide Alzheimer's and dementia response training to all of our staff. And there was some additional training for first responders in the field. This actually touches home to me. I've had, I've had to deal with this and with my own family, and I know it meant a lot to, to Mrs. Brown, but I appreciate her efforts in, in turning us on to this. This was training that, that a lot of positive feedback from staff. I thought that they really appreciated that we, that we considered this, that we, that we were aware that they were dealing with people, individuals in the, in the, in the public that are, are struggling with this. Not all those individuals, but their family members, and it provided a lot of guidance on, on how we can recognize those signs and to more effectively handle those calls for service. So that turned out really well. We're looking at doing something similar with persons who, or family members who have or, or living or dealing with individuals who suffer from autism. In May of this year, we're working, we're, we're going to work with the Johns Hopkins Medical Institute to provide training for officers on how to recognize the signs of when you're dealing with somebody who may have, suffer from that condition, and how best to interact or, or deal with them to safely and effectively resolve whatever issue we're dealing with. Again, dealing with the same objective, I think everybody's familiar with R I P A. It's the Racial and Identifying Identity Profiling Act. We went live with this January one, as we were required to by law. However, we kind of jumped on this as an organization and took the lead, I think, in the county and regionally. We've actually been testing, or beta-testing our processes and our policies since July of last year. I think we fine-tuned our approach to this, and I think we are in a, a very strong place to provide accurate data as we move forward. Again, it went live about two and a half weeks ago, and we're looking forward to, to, to those results. The one thing that we're going to do, the law requires that we, we provide the data, our R I P A data to the Department of Justice annually. We're going to, what we plan to do is to provide it public, to the public on a quarterly basis via our Transparency Page, which I'm going to talk about in, in a few minutes. So we, we think we're set up to, to do that. A lot of it is just capacity and technology to make sure that, that we have our ducks in a row to get that, to get that done. We also had an opportunity to do something a little unique. We've incorporated a youth therapy canine into the Police Department. This is not, this, I was amazed at how technical this program is or this process is. It's a program that we learned that was based out of the Midwest. We identified, with their help, we identified a canine. We sent the canine and the handler to Ohio, I believe it was, for intensive training on how to provide therapy to young people who are suffering some kind of trauma or going through a traumatic, traumatic experience. Our dog is a golden doodle, which I'm told is a golden retriever and poodle, which is supposed to be a very intelligent dog. It's hypoallergenic. It walks around the Police Department and is very, very popular around here, but its, its real intent is to provide a resource to young people who have either been the victim of some type of traumatic crime, witnessed something traumatic, or are in a traumatic environment. And whether we have to talk to them, we have to interact with them, or they just need something in the immediate to, to serve as some type of calming resource until we can get them additional resources that they need is the intent behind, behind this, this canine. Rookie, Rookie is the name of the dog. He's very young, and we're looking forward to, to some really strong things out of this program. We're kind of excited about it. We talked about mental health. I know we generally are talking about individuals in the field that we deal with. But just like the mindfulness program, we're also focusing on the mental health amongst our staff. And, you know, when I first arrived here, we had some of the same type of recognition programs that you typically find in a police department regarding a nice arrest or something like that, but we didn't really have something that recognized strong performance on a regular basis. It seemed like when we received a complaint against an officer, we were very quick to, to investigate that and document that and identify that. But when our officers were doing strong work, we weren't as quick or eager to do that. So we've incorporated a daily performance recognition program where they're not receiving, you know, daily kudos. But it's, our supervisors are required to, to, to recognize performance that is strong, that goes above and beyond, and, and may have otherwise been, been overlooked. Right now, we're, we've been doing this for about a year and a half. It's worked well. I'm looking in the next year to automate that and develop some, or leverage some software that may make that a little bit more effective. And I think the only deliverable that we've yet to fully achieve from the, from the strategic plan is our, our dash cam videos, for lack of a better term. They, they provide cameras through the front dash of the patrol car, as well as in the interior, in the backseat of patrol car. This is in the interest of transparency, which we think will supplement our body cameras very, very well. We are all set. The timeline for this has been impacted, according to the vendor, by supply chain issues. However, we think that those have been resolved, and we're hopeful to complete this project in, in March of this year. So that will be, that will be good. Another one of our objectives, this is an existing objective, and when I first got here, it was a little vague to me, the Safe and Secure Neighborhoods Initiative. We talked about doing a lot of good things, but it lacks specificity, and I, I pulled our staff together to, to figure out how we could take some measurable steps to make sure that we are increasing neighborhood safety. And the one area that we focused on this year with the support of the council was to leverage technology in doing so. We've deployed license plate readers, as most, as many cities have, throughout the city, and they've been incredible. They've helped us in over a hundred and thirty cases just this year alone, ranging from stolen vehicles to homicide. In fact, there's one high-profile homicide that had nearly no nexus to our city. It was a well-organized and well-planned homicide involving people from outside of our city that just happened to occur here. And frankly, without the, without the L P R, that case may have gone unsolved, and now we have two people in custody for that. So, so thank you to the, to the council for your support in, in this tool. It, it continues to, to pay dividends and make us safer and help those that are victimized by crime. And the nice thing, too, about it is it relates to our previous objective, where the A P R data is, is objective and unbiased. It's basically information that's entered into or observed regarding a vehicle that may have been associated with criminal activity without any other, any other variable. So it does, it does kind of relate to both of those objectives. Our drone program has also been very, very helpful in keeping, not only in providing neighborhood safety, but for staff safety as well. What used to take maybe eight or ten officers to kind of create a perimeter to make sure that individual, individuals were safe, we can now do with, with much less staff. It's nice for large events. I know we had it up for music in the park a couple of times, not only to get some cool shots for, for Park and Rec, but it also allows us to look at the perimeter and what's going on to make sure that everyone's safe. Unfortunately, we've, you know, we have short memories, but we've experienced things, just, you know, such as the, you know, the Garlic Festival, Gilroy, and other, and other things where we had some pretty tragic events happen there. And this lets us, this is a force multiplier. It lets us do a lot with the very, with much fewer personnel. It also lets, it also serves as an investigative tool. When we have serious crashes or serious crimes, we can put this up and recreate a crime scene. The technology is pretty cool, where we can actually get an overview of the crime scene or the collision scene, and for core purposes, provide an accurate account of what that looks like. And again, it's great, if we're looking for missing persons, actually, you know, when we, when we get reports of mountain lions, not that we, we do a heck of a lot about it, but we can kind of maybe identify where that, where that mountain lion may be, as opposed to walking out into a little bit more rural parts of the city. We can, we can put that up, which has been nice. And recently, we deployed it during a car stop where somebody was wanted for a crime, and they barricaded themselves in the car. It's always a difficult situation. It's a dangerous situation. And once they saw that we had deployed the drone, they kind of figured, hey, there, there's really nowhere to go. I'm not going to be able to escape this situation, and they, they complied, which was, which was great. And staff's been very responsible. We've had no complaints or in-flight incidents at this point. We're very judicious about when we use it. So it's, it's been a nice program. There's been some other areas that I won't go too deep into, but there's been some investigative tools that have been extremely beneficial. In today's day and age with social media and technology, when we write search warrants and, or get court orders for, say, telephones or social media sites, oftentimes, we get back extremely voluminous amounts of information, sometimes pages numbering in the hundreds of thousands. Our, our evidence and our data is in there somewhere. It's just a matter of being able to find it. And it's, it's not feasible to have human beings look through that, that much data, especially, you know, given the staff that we have. So we've invested in some, some software that, that assists us in doing that, which has proved very fruitful, especially in some very serious crimes. So that's been nice. And then we've also invested in, in some technology that would allow us to reduce the, the likelihood of vehicle pursuits, which contributes to, to everyone's safety. Finally, our, our next objective was to host community conversations on policing in San Mateo. We did this in a number of ways. We had a, hosted a Community Policing Academy this year. I went to, to most of these. It was an eleven-week program. It's, it's a, it's a big lift, not only for us, but for the participants. We asked for a significant commitment in order Uh we asked for a, a significant um commitment in order to, to complete and graduate from this program. Um and what I liked about it, and we did this intentionally, was we wanted a diverse kind of well-rounded um group of individuals. Uh we had about twenty folks go through this. Um and, you know, we wanted, we wanted individuals who kind of had different perceptions of law enforcement, or maybe had different interactions with law enforcement. And that's what we got. We weren't there to, to do a sales pitch. We weren't there to, to change anybody's mind. We were basically just there to pull back the curtain and let uh, let folks know how we operate as a police department, who our, who our officers are, um and get to, get to interact with them. And uh there's some, there's some, um you know, we obviously seek some feedback there. There's some, some quotes there from some folks that went through it. Um it was all very positive. And we look to do that um in the coming year. Uh we're expanding that to provide that, uh provide an academy in Spanish. And we're also looking at um, um creating academies uh, uh directed towards specific groups. Uh we're uh specifically the youth, our youth and a, and a senior academy that we think might be beneficial because they may have some specific questions or needs. As most of you are aware, we continue our San Mateo Real Talk sessions. Um we invite leaders in the community uh from allied agencies, not just law enforcement, but across disciplines to participate in these conversations. And it's nice because the public has an opportunity to, to interact with us in real time as well and ask those questions. I'm hopeful that sometime this year, we can do this in person at some point. Um but as long as um we have Zoom available to us, we will, we will continue to do that. The nice thing about Zoom, um although I prefer the real, the real person or uh being together in the same room, is that for those who cannot um attend the session, we post those on our website and make them available so they can be, be watched after the fact. Uh COVID also inhibited our ability to um allow ride-alongs, which were, are always a popular um, a popular way for, for people to learn about uh the police department. So what we did was uh, we created virtual ride-alongs. And um Janine Luda, who does a lot um in, in working to communicate with, with the public, um coordinated that. She did a great job and kind of provided a, a snapshot, or people could follow along with an officer as he or she worked their shift um for a few hours to kind of get a sense of, of, of what that's, what that's like. Um our PAL and neighborhood activities um have kind of went through a transition over the last year or so. Um you know, PAL, uh PAL did an incredible job. Um they really pivoted and transitioned and, and they could have kind of closed their doors for a while, especially during COVID because of the restrictions that were involved there. But instead, they said, hey, how can we be uh, how can we be a resource for the community? How can we help? And they um, they initiated a food distribution program. Uh they supported over two hundred families for uh, an extended period of time through the pandemic, where it wasn't just a meal. Um it was a, it was, it, it we, we, we called it a, a, a kind of a pantry program that would basically, you know, we, we provided supplies that would get a family of four through, you know, a week or so. Um and I, I, I went out and, and, and did that as often as I could. And um, you know, we have a good relationship with our PAL kids, our PAL families and, and um, and that relationship is a nice one. But to see the relief on uh, on the faces of parents and to uh, to be part of that was, was was pretty special and, and PAL really does have an impact. Um you know, fortunately, over the holidays, this past, uh the past holiday season, we, we kind of got back to um, to some in-person and uh events. And it was nice. It was nice to see, you know, with we, we amended them a little bit. They weren't the same as they were before. We were trying to be uh as safe as possible, but it was nice to get people um uh people back and uh, and experience that, you know, that sense of community, that sense of belonging. And you know, we were able to host National Night Out this year in August, which we weren't be able to do the year before, which was great. Um and uh, and you know, we got a lot of participation from staff too, which that's voluntary. And uh it was nice to see the officers um out there doing that. Uh finally, we created uh, or we're, we actually created this year before, but we built on our um on our uh data transparency webpage. And I'm going to stop sharing this screen and move on to uh, to kind of run you through that if I can um quickly. And um, just to familiarize um what that looks like and uh, and how it works. We're looking to improve it. So um, part of my effort here is to, to make people aware of it. It's been around for a while. We like it, uh but we know that we're, we know that there's more work to do and we can always um, we can always improve. So that's what we're looking to do here. Um this is our accountability page, um which is, it's within the police department webpage. Um there's a lot of uh information here. Our whole policy manual, our whole, whole training manual um is here. Um but within this is our data transparency page, and that's where I'd like to focus um just for a few minutes, if I can. Uh if you'll indulge me for just a few. Um there's a lot of information here on how to, how to uh submit a Public Records Act request, how to obtain a pollution port. Again, our manual and training plans are there. Um I'm going to take you to a crime mapping page initially. Uh this is a, this is kind of a useful page. It provides some information about crime in your neighborhood. Yeah, this is not, uh, this is not unusual. You should find this with most departments these days. I mean, this is something that um that people should do. I just want to run through it real quick um to kind of just like a thirty-second snapshot. So you can query by type of call um and a, and a date range. So I'll just take you back for the past week. Um and, and I've listed um, um burglaries there. So these are, these are the burglaries we've, we've experienced in the last week. And you can actually click on one of the calls and it'll give you some information about um, about that specific incident. For example, this was an auto burglary that occurred on the twelfth. Um and it, it gives you just a snapshot of, of what's going on. So if, if if that's your neighborhood or you work nearby, you kind of get an idea of, of what's going on. We thought that was, we think it's great, uh but we didn't think it was enough. So we wanted to build on that. So we've done some things that I don't think you're going to find um in, in other places um very often. Uh traffic is a big deal, obviously, in, in our city. It's still the number one complaint that we get, uh or the, the number one concern that we hear about is, is traffic enforcement. What are we doing about traffic? So we could sit, we created traffic safety maps to actually give some accurate, um hard data about what we're seeing uh when it comes to collisions in our city. So uh we've separated them out by type of collision. You can do, you, uh injury will pretty much give you almost all collisions. Um but if you pick out like DUI-related um collisions, for example, again, it'll give you a map um of the city. Uh you're able to uh, to filter it by date. This is a, a two-year period. So you're going to see um a significant amount of, of drunk drivings as it, as it loads here. And again, same, same type of thing. You can click on one of these and it'll, it'll tell you the date, um the time, uh where it occurred, what, what the cause was. And uh it even tells you how many of these incidents happened in a certain area. So for example, i- in this particular area, there were two. Um and it'll, it'll, it'll give you some information. And it helps us, especially when we're talking to the community about traffic and what's happening, what's happening um in their neighborhoods. So we thought that was great, um but we still thought that that wasn't quite enough. Um I, I kind of pushed a little bit. I wanted to, to really do a deep dive into uh being transparent and opening up um what we do to the public. So we came up with a, a data transparency page. Um I want to begin by saying that we looked for someone to do this for us. And we really, we could not find a vendor um that, that could meet our needs. Uh so I want to uh really recognize Richie Pierce from the IT department, um as well as Michael Hopps, um who really sat down and created this on their own. It's, it's um, this is basically was created by two people and and Allison Gilmore and Richie have um, have picked up the torch and, and carried it um as we uh, as we move forward. Um quick caveat, uh we update this every quarter. Uh this information is uh, it, and it started in uh January of twenty twenty. Um it's kind of what I went back to. It was kind of my idea and I didn't want to um task people with an impossible task. So we, we, we started with a start date. Um it takes about um, of three weeks or so to update the, to um, put the data together to uh, to update it each quarter. So we're hoping in the next week or so that we'll have the final quarter of the last calendar year up. But if you go to the face page, you'll notice that we, we, we show the top ten arrests, um the types of calls we're going to, what type of reports we're taking. Um just some basic information um about call, calls for service, arrests, crime reports in a bar graph, a pie, pie chart type of thing. And then on the side here, you'll see that we've separated this into nine, nine areas where you can do a much deeper dive. Uh the first is um lists or addresses citizen or residence calls for service. These are calls for service that police department, the police officers are responding to in the field. Um this has a, a, a little bit of a different feature. Um it lists the, the, the most predominant types of calls that we get, but it also provides a geographic map of the city. Um the darker the shade of blue, the more calls that we get. Um you can click on this and it'll give you just a little bit of a, uh just a number of calls. Um um that, what, what beat it is, um just a kind of a basic um uh type of approach. Uh same thing for officer-initiated calls, same type of thing. Um um it's kind of nice because you can kind of see what's going on in your neighborhood, what those, what those call types are. Um you'll notice here, just the top ten call types, our biggest, uh the biggest request for service we get is traffic-related. So um traffic stops will, will always be um the, the largest self-initiated um um act, action that we take. And that's usually due to complaints uh or targeted kind of enforcement based on either a collision data or complaints. And then we take a little bit of a different turn and we, we um, we look at police reports. And we uh, we take a look at what type of reports that we're taking. Um and you'll see to the left, um uh the top ten types of reports that we're taking, um we're documenting. Again, you'll have the, the opportunity to look by neighborhood. And then this is a graph that shows, you know, um for example, over this time period, we've uh, we've authored about eighty-two hundred police reports and just under four thousand of those resulted in some type of, some type of arrest or um enforcement action. Um and then we take a look at ourselves. Uh we uh, we look um at internal affairs um investigations. Uh we, we provide a month by month. Um uh we, we, we provide basically what the law allows. We have to be careful here with personnel stuff. Um but um whether it's sustained, not sustained, or unfounded, those findings are there. So it'll go month by month. Um you'll notice that we have fifteen complaints, which out of a hundred and three thousand calls are not, i- is, is, is pretty good. These are, these are complaints that resulted in or um alleged policy violations that resulted in an internal affairs investigation. Um most of those have come internally, where um our supervisor and management staff have recognized that a policy may have been violated, um so an investigation was initiated. Um while the remainder of those are based on complaints we get from residents or people in the community. Uh we have an officer-involved shooting page. Uh knock on wood, um we're very superstitious in law enforcement. Uh this goes back to Jerry, January of twenty twenty. We have not had any officer-involved shootings during that time period. Had we have, uh this is where that data or that information would be stored. Um our assault on officers, um the next, the next two or three sections dive a little bit deeper. Um and uh we provide um kind of a, a reference of uh, you know, what arrests are associated um most commonly with, with these types of assaults. What types of calls are we going on that result in these, these types of assaults? Uh who's injured? Um and then the source of the call. Uh you can see seventy percent of the, the calls that we respond to where there is some type of assault on an officer is generated by a call for service and the other thirty is some type of self-initiated activity. Uh then we provide some demographic information regarding the individual that we encounter, um including age, gender, ethnicity, uh what type of weapon was used, whether um somebody was just punching the officer, whether biting or spitting at the officer, or whether they actually used some type of other weapon. Um whether there's a mental health component um that involved with the, with the encounter, uh de-escalation techniques that were, uh that were used by the officer to try to de-escalate this, the, the situation. And whether or not um the, the, the individual we're encountering was under the influence of alcohol or some, some other type of substance. And then we do the same thing. Um when we, when we have to respond with force, uh we're very conscientious about that. Um and we, we, we document that as thoroughly as we possibly can. Same type of situation here, uh the top ten arrests that um, that result in force having to be uh, uh used as well as the type ten call, top ten call types when there, when uh there's a, a response that requires force. And again, in, in all of these, we have the, the, the neighborhood geographic map where you can take a look at that. Um this is interesting right here. I just point this out real quick, that the force type, we're very, like I said, I, I I uh, when I got here, um I I wanted to make sure that we documented force um in a um comprehensive manner. Um and that meant any type of force. So um i- if, if someone is non-compliant in any way and we have to grab their arm to prevent them from, from escaping or from, or to put them in handcuffs because they won't comply, in my mind, that's force. Um so when you see physical controls, uh like eighty-five percent of the time, that's what we're talking about is, is um is, it's, is that level of force. So I think sometimes people misinterpret force to be something more significant than that. But if somebody's non-compliant, we have to force them to do something. Uh in my mind, that's force. And I expect that to be tracked and we evaluate each instance. Um in fact, each use of force report crosses my desk and that's where these numbers come from. So not only the force type, but again, we, we look at whether there's a mental health component involved, what type of de-escalation tactics were used and whether or not the individual we're interacting with um is under the influence of, of anything. Um you'll notice our, our force, the response with force is, is used um uh very infrequently compared to our total number of calls for service, which is, which is nice. Um and again, sa- similar to um the assault on officers, about seventy percent of the time, we're responding to a, a call for service from a resident or somebody in the community. And then the demographic information, um age, gender, e- ethnicity. Uh this one, we include residents. So uh we, we document whether the individual we're interacting with is a San Mateo resident um or lives elsewhere. And then the type of weapon they may have used um in the encounter, in the encounter if they did. Um then I'm, I'm getting to the end here. I don't make, I don't mean to take up too much time. But we do the same thing for um, for arrest data. Um again, what uh, what are, what are we arresting people for? These are the, the top ten um things there. What are the, what are the calls that we're going to that are resulting in arrest? We have our, our geographic chart there, our numbers up there. Um little over half the time, we're, we're arresting people because people are calling us out to the scene to report a crime. Um and then our um, our demographic information is provided here before, including um the citizen, or I mean, I'm sorry, the city of residents. The one unique thing, which um I'm kind of proud of the department for, for participating in this and going along with this, especially we work closely with the POA to develop this portion of the page. Uh we really wanted people to know who we were. And uh we tried to sit down and figure out what were, what would com- what would staff be comfortable with sharing? Um how could we really um per- paint an accurate picture of what our sta- uh what our workforce looks like? And this is what we came up with. So obviously, we have age, gender. Unfortunately, I'm on the high end of the age. Um education, the nice thing about education is you'll notice that um a little over ninety-five percent of our staff have something more than uh, have a, a little bit more than a high school education all the way up to a doctorate. So um it's, that's, that's kind of a nice thing to see. We break it down by ethnicity, of course. We're a very young department. Um fifty-eight, um fifty-eight of our, our folks um are um uh here for, or have five years or less with the department, which is the vast majority of, of individuals. Uh sixteen percent of our staff are veterans. Uh that's kind of nice though. And we thought this was an interesting fact because it provides perspective and experience um that sixty percent of our, our staff are, are, are parents. And um uh I kind of like that. I think that that uh, that it gives them a um, a background that um that contributes to being a strong police officer. Uh this is where we got a little intrusive. And again, this is where I, I have to um uh thank the POA and our staff for uh, for willing to um, to be open and um, and, and really let folks know who they were. We asked about um religious affiliation, which uh they, they um uh they provided their um languages. So these are languages other than English that are spoken in the department. Um you can see like uh Spanish obviously is the, the biggest. And although a lot of these um percentages only represent maybe one or two officers, um it really is a tremendous resource. Uh you never know when you're going to need uh one of these languages in the field. And um, and it, it's been, it's been beneficial to have such a, a diverse uh workforce when it comes to uh linguistic skills. Uh just under six percent of our um workforce uh are members of the uh LGBTQ community. Uh and again, I really commend them for uh, the staff for um, for, for being as open as they were. I think that it shows a lot of, about who they are as people. And then we thought this was important. Um we, we actually consider this during the hiring process. It's hard. It's not always easy to do, especially with the cost of living these days, but we think a connection to San Mateo um is a valuable thing uh for folks that work here, whether they're in the field or in the office or whatever it is. So um we try to track that. Um and we can't always, ob- obviously, we can't always um accommodate that. The, the, the greater the hiring pool, um the better we're going to do as far as um hiring qualified candidates. But we do consider a connection to San Mateo um when we make those decisions. Um so I'm almost done here. I don't want to keep you too long, but I just have uh one more place to go here and then we'll wrap this up. So looking ahead, um uh what do we want to do? We want to, I mean, we're, we're, we're always looking to further our training efforts. In fact, we uh, uh we, we have a meeting um uh in early February to uh update our training plan uh to incorporate de-escalation bias and principle-led policing um as kind of a theme for that. That needs to be incorporated in our, uh throughout our training program. Um continue to identify and leverage technology um to in- increase uh neighborhood safety. Um that's been great and we're just looking to, looking to get a, a little bit better. Um I mentioned, we're, we plan on incorporating RIPA data into the transparency webpage well before it's due to the Department of Justice. Um and then there's some other projects on the transparency page that I'd like to, that we're focusing on. One, we're creating a tutorial in both English and Spanish that I'm hoping that will be up soon. So um if folks have a hard time navigating that page, um they can, they can simply um That I'm hoping that will be up soon. So um if folks have a hard time navigating that page, um they can, they can simply um uh listen to the t- tutorial and that will uh. That will help them a little bit. Um the one thing that's not on the page, I'm always looking at what what is on there that that. We should know that is not contained on there. We don't do a good job of tracking this. So so we've just started doing this a couple months ago. You'll notice in the uh you, the force response and I believe the arrest data, we talk about, or I'm sorry, the assault on officer and uh and we're um. Uh force response, we talk about de-escalation techniques. Well, our officers use, are are, they implement those techniques every day. And and most of the, more often than not, when they implement those techniques, no force is necessary. There is no assault. Uh we don't do a very good job of tracking that. So uh we're tracking uh when those, when those techniques um are used and we aren't. You know, wh- when it works well. And we do, we just don't, we just don't um track when it works well and there's no force uh or assault um. Uh necessary. So that's a project that we have ongoing. And then we do have um uh within there somewhere, I'd like to um. Be able for folks to go in there and look at what's going on now. Um to be able to look at calls for service and kinda see um. Where where those calls for service are and and what's happening. There's an officer safety component to that where we may have to delay it by a few minutes. So we don't have people beating us to calls for service. But if we could have like a ten minute lag time or whatever, I'd love for folks to go on there. And uh see what's happening in the city when it comes to where their police officers are and what they're doing. Um traffic again is is the big one. And as we get out of COVID, um I think everybody realizes that. We forgot how bad traffic was and uh and we're feeling it again. So in the next year, we're looking to um. Uh within the existing staffing levels, this isn't a pitch for bodies. Um but uh we uh we're looking at increasing our um. How we can um conduct traffic um enforcement and how to be strategic about that. Um our um our radio and communication infrastructure um is in need of some tending to, so we're going to look at that. Um the encryption conversation is not something that we want to entertain, but if we're forced to go that way, we wanna um. Uh be able to do it the most cost-effective manner um possible. And then we have a couple, the last two I'm gonna mention before I, before I wrap up is. Um there's a couple of programs that I think uh would be nice. The one is, the first there is Live nine one one. This allows an officer in the field. To listen to a nine one one call. They can't interrupt or can't um interrupt on the conversation between the the dispatcher and the caller. However. Uh and we think this is especially valuable when we're going to those calls that may have some type of mental health component. Because no matter how well a dispatcher relays that information. Uh from the caller to the officer, there's really nothing like understanding who you're talking to or 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 what the sense is of that type of caller. We think that um being able to listen to that will give them a better idea of what they're walking into and maybe um. Uh result in fewer um instances where, you know, things, you know, uh kinda go nuts from the get-go um and uh and provide them with a. With a a little bit more information that allows them to be a little bit more tactful and strategic about what they're, what they're gonna do. And then the final thing is something called Q hit. Uh like everyone else, we have a a survey process where we mail out surveys. We have a very, very, I mean, they're always good, but there, it's a very, very poor response rate. This um. Uh leverage techs, tech, leverages technology to allow people to complete those either online or via text. So we're hoping that that will uh enhance our response. It also provides for. Um uh um uh somebody who filed a police report to track the progress of that report. So example, if you've, if you're. You know, if your car was broken into and you filed the report with the police department, you can track when that report was written, when it was approved. And what happened after that re- um regarding the uh the investigation. So. We're kind of excited about those things. Those, those will take us a few months to get going, but we're already, they're already in the works there. Um so that's it. I guess the the bottom line is um looking at our deliverables from last year's strategic plan. Um once we get the the car cameras done, well, we can, we can say that we've we've um. Addressed all the deliverables that we wanted to, but I think that as we um. As we completed each of those dele- deliverables, we recognized that there was, there was more to do. And uh so we added, we added a little bit more, but. That concludes everything I have. I hope I didn't keep you too long and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did I put everybody to sleep?
No, the Zoom service kind of backed out on me. Anyway, thank you very much, Chief, for uh. The extremely detailed presentation of uh uh so much information. Um. I will turn it over now to council members for any questions or comments. Yeah, go ahead. Council member Lee.
Well, thank you so much, Chief, for the presentation. And um and I'm really. Uh glad that you elevated the the data transparency page um to highlight some of the um. The new features. Um I get, I was just wondering, looking forward because. Um it looks like we're layering data, um new data on top of like. On top of the last year's data. And so I was wondering, is is there a certain point where. The data will be sort of extrapolated to show trends over um multiple years? Is is that, is that the direction that we're going ultimately? Um cuz I think that that would be a useful uh tool and resource for us. Um and also our community members because, you know, having, having the data um uh presented in this way, um. It's, it's really, it's really valuable, but I think what would actually help us. Turn data and information into like more meaningful um policy directives is to. To better understand where the trends are. Um and and so I'm, I'm hoping that that is kind of. Um a possibility as as you, you know, conceive of the future of how how we present this data and um. To the public and to, and to the council.
Yeah, I I may not have explained it um as well as I should have. The first two pages that I saw you with the crime. Data and the the traffic data, those go back to two thousand fourteen and two thousand seventeen respectfully, resp- um respectively. And we can, we can measure trends there. With the last uh transparency page that I showed you, so we started in January of twenty twenty. Once we finish the final quarter of twenty twenty-one, those two years will be separated and we'll go year by year to kinda measure those years. The challenge with that, it was, it was such a heavy lift and um. You know, for such a, you know, we did, we did it internally, which is unusual. Usually, we would go to a vendor for that, that um it's gonna. You know, it, the the farthest back that we went was January of twenty twenty. So we had to start somewhere. So we'll have two years to compare. Um here in a couple of weeks and then we'll move forward from there. But yeah, that's the, the, the premise behind it is to to kinda see what direction uh we're going with those trends.
That, that's really helpful to hear. Um and I think just, just to kind of add on to that point. Um I really, I really appreciate you capturing the um connections to community. And um and one of the data points I I think would be interesting to capture is. You know, tho- those officers who live in the city of San Mateo, but also the county of San Mateo, we know that um, you know, that. Being within the county is is, you know, is I think a relevant connection point. Um but I, as we're like looking at the housing crisis and how. Um how fewer and fewer of our officers, especially our new recruits, are actually living. I mean, it's a huge stretch to live. Within the county even. Um but I I would like, you know, I I think that that's an important story to tell. In terms of how the impact of the housing crisis and how um how challenging it is to recruit. And retain um our officers and 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 employee staff that um. That live in this community and can stay in this community. So I I hope that that can be um included.
That's a, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um Chief, thank you so much for the comprehensive um presentation. Uh my question related to how do you know when it is appropriate for Brianna Fair to come to a uh. Um a particular stop or a call. Um I, you mentioned, you touched on it just a little when you said dispatch. But um can you give me a a little more understanding of that and how soon after police arrived, does Miss Fair arrive or how how is it working?
Yeah, so we had these conversations, these conversations went round and round when we were developing this program. So we provided a training um. We developed the training curriculum for both dispatchers and officers in the field. Um and so. Um Brianna carries a radio. Um she knows, she kinda has an idea of what's going on. We've kinda, she doesn't have to speak the the police language. She can just come on and and speak um. Normal language, but she has a fancy little call sign. Um and so what typically what a um a dispatcher will do is if. We have some pretty experienced dispatchers. When they get a call and they kinda suspect that there'll be a mental health component. Um they'll make sure that she's aware of the call. She also has a phone where they can page her calls for service. Um and where she won't respond to the call, she may stage or she may be, you know, down the street or are on the same block. And then when the officer's determined that it's safe, um they'll say, hey, come on in and 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 then she'll engage in it with the the individual. However, on the other hand, there are those calls that we go to that we have no idea. That there would be some type of mental health component involved. I mean, sometimes you go to a traffic collision and there's some type of mental health issue going on. Um our officers in the field have have likewise received the training like, hey, doesn't matter what call you're going to. If you sent, if you, if you think that. That uh Brianna would be a resource, don't hesitate to to give her a call. So. I think we're still feeling, I mean, I think ideally, I mean, we talked about this. And the city manager, I think, was involved in some of these conversations. You know, ideally down the road, I mean, it's not far-fetched that um that as Brianna becomes more accustomed with the community and gets to know people in the community that. Um that she may be interacting with folks on her own. Um I mean, we have, we have BA, BHRS in our community dealing with clients, patients all the time without police officers. Um the only, the only difference is they haven't called the police. There's no crisis going on right there. So. Um so I don't know whether that answers your question. Um we are. Learning as we go with this. I I think to this point, the dispatchers and officers have a good handle on uh when they should be giving Brianna a heads up. Um but our our, our main concern now too is we wanna make her available. We don't wanna put her in a vulnerable position. Uh safety is, is our most important consideration there. So um it's a, it's a co-response model, but we wanna make sure it's safe before, before she initiates.
Thank you, Chief. Any other council members with questions or comments?
I think I fall into this category of most people where once. Once you started talking about Rookie, Chief, uh all I could think about was when do I get to meet Rookie? How can I play with Rookie? I look, I look forward to meeting Rookie very soon.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chief. We uh, I think we all appreciate hiring Rookie. Sure, he'll be a good cop and bring lots of luck. So thank you, thank you. Eric, did you have any comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I think, uh, thank you very much, Chief. I think that uh draws us to the last item on our agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor, do you wanna ask for public comment? We do have one attendee.
Of course, one attendee. Let's go ahead and ask for public comment.
Si, did you want to speak on this item? Raise your hand. Mr. Mayor, he, we do not have a hand raised. So no public comment.
Thank you very much, uh uh Madam Clerk though for uh offering that opportunity. Well, thank you all very much. We're gonna move on to the last item tonight, which is reports and announcements. I'm gonna ask staff if they wanna go first, the city manager, city attorney, anybody else? Okay, seeing no tipers, okay. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Binney. I just wanted to to note very briefly that uh the External Diversity Equity and In- and Inclusion Task Force has been formed. And its first meeting uh is scheduled for January the twenty eighth. And I wanted to uh give kudos to Kathy Kleinbaum and Heather Stewart for making that happen.
Great. Thank you very much. Good news. Yes. Okay. Uh I'll bring you back to the council. The council members, what are your reports and announcements?
I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh I have a um a request that the council consider um. Designating me as a um, as a participant in the South Bay Peninsula Preservation Lab. Um I would participate as a member on behalf of the city of San Mateo. This lab is funded by the Silicon Valley Community Foundation and um its intent is to convene. Um local government agencies and um and housing advocates, uh how. Affordable housing um and nonprofits and developers. To um to look into um ways that we can advance housing preservation strategies um at the regional level. Um housing preservation is a really key issue um and strategy that I think we have some learning to do. Um and I hope to represent the city in this capacity and bring some of that learning and those ideas back to the, to the city. And some of the um participants I'll mention are Urban Habitat. Um Sacred Heart, City of Mountain View, City of San Jose, the County um Housing and Health Department. The City of Palo Alto, Hip Housing, some of our friends at Mid Penn, um CZI. Anyway, there's a, there's a long list, but I was invited to participate and I would love to get the blessing of the council.
Okay, thank you. Um I don't know if that's something we could do now, Mr. City Attorney. Is that uh something we need to come back on?
Uh that would be something to come back with, that a future agenda.
Okay, so do we have members in favor of uh bringing this back for discussion?
I do.
Yeah, okay. I think we have, how many? Two of us? Three of us?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Then it's back for discussion. Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Please note, Mr. City Manager. And I also wanna mention, uh just for your information, uh Council Member Lee, Hart is also working on developing. A preservation program. We've had uh quite a bit of uh um information going into it. We're actually closing in on some opportunities. So um maybe we could talk more about this offline. Thank you. Okay, um seeing no other reports or announcements, I don't really have anything to announce myself. So I will take this time to uh adjourn this meeting with my stapler. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.